Everybody, take your seat. We're going to begin the meeting here. Is that thing on? All right, everybody, take your seat. We're going to begin the meeting here. Don't have a gavel or it'd bang that. Take your seats, please. Let's begin the meeting here. All right, I want to welcome you to this meeting of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System Board of Trustees Meeting on December 6, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. in the Cordell Hall Building, House Hearing Room 3. Appreciate each of you being here today and approximately 10:00 a.m. And we'll ask our Executive Secretary and Director of the Retirement System, Jamie Wayman, to call the roll.
Thank you, Treasurer. Mr. Archer, Mr. Barker, Mr. Cox,
Here.
Mr. Ellis,
Here.
Treasurer Lillard,
Here.
Ms. Maxwell,
Here.
Ms. Moore, Mr. Stanfield, Commissioner Williams, Mr. Wormsley, I'm here as well. You have 11 present.
There we go. Chair declares a quorum present and the next item on the agenda is Item 3, which is the minutes of the September 6, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, the Chair will move approval of the September 6 minutes. Is there a second? All right, Mr. Wormsley seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do this by voice vote. Since this is an in-person meeting, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the matter is approved. Next item is Item Number 4, which is the Board of Trustees Committee Reports. First item is Item A, which is the Administrative Committee chaired by Mr. Wayman. Mr. Wayman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Treasurer. In the Administrative Committee meeting this morning was held in Conference Room D on the 8th floor at 9 o'clock. Action item was to approve the minutes of the September 6, 2024 meeting. We had a presentation by Joe Walker, the Assistant Director of Employer Reporting for four political subdivisions seeking participation in TCRS effective January 1, 2025. I provided an overview of the actuarial evaluation that we'll hear more in detail later in the meeting. And there was also an operations update provided by both TCRS personnel and financial empowerment personnel on the operations of both entities during the last quarter, and that is the report of the Administrative Committee.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Wayman, in regard to the report of the Administrative Committee? Thank you for that. Next item is Item B, the Audit Committee. Mr. Barker, the Chair of the Committees, are recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe it's supposed to be on. It is. This morning, our Audit Committee met at 8 o'clock in Conference Room C on the 8th floor. Our action item was to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, September 6, and then the report from Mr. Pierce, our internal auditor. First item was the internal audit results, which includes several what's called collision reports, where information from several sources are compared to see if certain items are in agreement. And that's a very interesting report. I would encourage you to take a look at that if you have a chance. We also looked at the various audit projects that were underway. Couple had been completed. There has been no comments made through the comptroller top line. And then Mr. Wayman reported on a number of updates from various parts of pension administration related to overpayments, legislation, and new laws. Also, Mr. Wayman disseminated a summary of the various return-to-work options that are available. And again, I would encourage everyone to get a copy of that to see the various ways that that can happen. That's our report from the Audit Committee, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any questions, Mr. Barker, about the Audit Committee report? Seeing none, the next item is Item 4C, which is the Investment Committee Report. I chair that committee and I'll give the report. Your Investment Committee met this morning and considered two transactions which were approved. Also, the committee considered a performance review by Mark Brubaker and Joe Abidu of Veris Consulting and discussed that extensively. And there was also a brief portfolio review by our CIO, Michael Brakebill. Both of those items will be repeated here in this committee meeting today. Any questions about the Investment Committee report? All right, seeing none, next item is Item 5, Political Subdivision Seeking Participation. Mr. Wayman, you're recognized on this item.
Thank you, Treasurer. As I mentioned earlier, there are four entities that are seeking participation in TCRS effective January 1, 2025. The first is the Duck River Utility Commission. Information related to that entity can be found on Page 25 of your packet. This is a joint venture between the City of Manchester and Toluoma in Middle Tennessee. They are seeking participation in the Legacy Defined Benefit Plan. They're not offering prior service, nor are they covering part-time employees. They are including cost-of-living adjustments. Their initial employer rate is 9% of payroll with employees required to contribute 2.5% of payroll. Both the joint venture sponsors also signed the appropriate agreements authorizing participation by the Duck River Utility Commission. On Page 35 is the Elk River Public Utility District. It also is seeking participation in the Legacy Defined Benefit Plan. They are not offering any prior service, nor are they covering their part-time employees. They are including cost-of-living adjustments. The recommended employer contribution rate is 9% with employees contributing 2.5%. On Page 41 is Myland Public Utilities Authority. They have previously participated in TCRS under the City of Myland, but have reorganized as an authority, so they're going to be a separate legal entity in TCRS. They too are going with the Legacy Defined Benefit Plan. Since the prior service is covered under the City of Myland, it's only prospective service in the plan. They are not covering part-time employees, but they do include cost-of-living adjustments. The employer rate is 8.89%, which is what is currently being paid by the City of Myland, and the employees will not be contributing to the plan. Finally, is the Town of Thompson Station. They too are seeking participation in the Legacy Defined Benefit Plan. They're not offering prior service, nor are they covering part-time employees, but they are including cost-of-living benefits. Employer recommended employer rate is 6.9% and the employee rate is 5%. The Administrative Committee this morning made a motion for me to make a recommendation at this board meeting to approve participation in TCRS for these four entities in TCRS effective January 1, 2025, and I make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Wayman to adopt and approve the item shown on Item 5 on our agenda. There's Political Subdivision Seeking Participation. Is there a second for his motion? Mr. Barker seconds it then. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of approving this motion and approving these subdivisions seeking participation say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the items are approved. Next item is Item 6, which is our actuarial valuation presentation by USI Consulting, Justin Thacker, FSA. Mr. Thacker, you're welcome here today and you have the floor.
Sit on. Oh, now it is. Yeah, thank you. Good morning. All right, I'm here to talk about the Legacy Pension Plan Funding Valuation Results as of June 30, 2024. So we're in December now. It takes a little while to collect data, look at assets, run liabilities, but we're here now to report on that result as of June 30, 2024. So any activity in the investment market since June 30 would not be reflected here. But this will give you a good sense of where things are. In general, not a lot of volatility from the last time that we were here, so we'll be able to go through some of these slides at a high level, although I don't want to rob you of a good actuarial presentation, so I'll dive into a couple of topics here and there since you only get to hear from me a couple of times a year. Couple of high-level reminders. We are setting rates that are effective, or you'll be approving rates, that would be effective July 1 of next year. So there's a one-year lag and to allow time to get the information, get the results calculated, and then budget into budgets for next year. We also will take a sneak peek at the financial health of the plan. We like to look at that each year and see how things are trending. And then, as a reminder, there are separate reports for GASB disclosures. We'll touch on those a little bit here as to what those will look like, but the main purpose of this presentation is for funding recommendations. Little more background. We do an experience study, which means we look at data every four years to evaluate the assumptions that we're using. Assumptions like mortality, retirement rates, turnover, salary experience, financial assumptions like investment returns, cost-of-living adjustments. We look at those every four years. And we're coming up on now, we're just beginning the next four-year period that we'll report to you next summer, that will recover the period from 2020 through 2024. So all these results are still using the prior study that was through 2020. So we'll be interested to see what the data shows us over the last four years as we look at that study next year. There's also an actual audit performed at least every 10 years by an outside actuarial firm. So that's also something that was last done in 2020 and those numbers, our numbers were validated in that process. Okay, high-level summary. We are now looking at state higher education employees that were hired prior to July 1, 2014. This is what we call the Legacy Pension Plan. Any employees hired after July 1, 2014 are a part of the Hybrid Pension Plan, which we'll talk about in March. So this represents still a very large group. You'll see some comparisons later in the presentation that shows the magnitude of how the Legacy Plan is still very sizable compared to the relatively new Hybrid Plan, even though we're now just past the 10-year anniversary of setting up the Hybrid Plan. If you look down, there's 650 also local governments that are participating by their choice. You just heard several that were asking to join as new employers. There's 650 or so of those. They choose their own benefit structure as to which benefits are allowed and then have their own rates that are established on their behalf. So those are done separately. This is, again, for the state and teacher groups mainly within the Legacy Plan. But at a high level, we have 161,000 active employees still in the Legacy Plan, even though all new employees since 2014 have gone into the Hybrid Plan. There's still 161,000 active participants, 185,000 retirees that generate about $3.4 billion in annual payments that are being paid from the TCRS trust fund. So a very, very sizable amount and very meaningful to the community, for sure. The Legacy Plan as of June 30, 2024, I'm sure it's a higher today than it was at June 30, but it had $67.4 billion in the Legacy Plan. Tack on a couple of more billion that is in the Hybrid Plan, and we were knocking on the door of $70 billion as of June 30, 2024. I already touched on this, so we'll skip over that. This page is really for your reference. I leave this in here every year in case there's questions. But the Hybrid Plan had a slightly lower benefit formula, slightly different eligibility requirements, but also has a 5% defined contribution component from the State of Tennessee along with the Stabilization Reserve, which means additional contributions above the minimum are going into a, almost like a rainy day fund in case there's some volatility in the future. And then there are also cost controls in the Hybrid Plan. If there are significant volatility in the investment markets that the Stabilization Reserve can't absorb, then there's the ability to shut off certain benefits so that we control the cost in that plan. Legacy Plan does not have those, so there is still significant potential volatility in the Legacy Plan, even though for the past several years, we've seen a relatively good amount of stability when you balance it all out in terms of adding several years together. You'll see some slides later on that as well. High level here, again, the total number of active employees you'll see is decreasing except for the political subdivisions. And the reasons are, these are the state and teacher groups that are the Legacy Plan, so there are no new employees going into these plans. So as people terminate or retire, the total number of active participants is declining, as we would expect. And that pattern has been consistent ever since we enacted the Hybrid Plan 10 years ago. The only reason the political subdivisions are still increasing is because this represents all political subdivisions, including new employees that are entering into the political subdivisions, that does not have the distinction of closing down one plan and starting another in the grand total. Total compensation, the 2024 column there, if you look down closer to the bottom, shows that you have about $9.4 billion in payroll. That is a part of the summation of all the individual participants and all these different components of the plans. I won't drill down into each row, but in general, this is total compensation. So this reflects changes in the total size of the group as people have terminated. It's not necessarily a direct relationship to... That doesn't mean the average raise was 6% last year. It just means the total average compensation adjusted. Although I will say, for the past couple of years, we have noticed in all the different groups, salary increases have been a little bit higher than our initial expectations or initial assumptions were made. And I think that was just related to maybe some years where they were lower than what our assumptions were and some rebalancing of that since the pandemic. So we have seen that in a couple of years, a couple of years in a row. The retiree population, again, you can see the 2024 column. Look down to the bottom, 185,000 retirees that are receiving monthly checks. Again, those numbers are actually still growing because the active employees that are terminating and retiring are entering into the retiree population. So it'll be a while before that retiree population starts to decline. But to the extent that there are some deaths during the year, new retirements that are exceeding those, those numbers are still growing. Still focusing on the 2024 column, this shows you the total at the very bottom, the $3.4 billion of annual retiree checks. This is how that is broken down by the various groups. So I won't drill down into each of those, but if you wanted to see how those split out, I wanted to be able to provide that to you as a point of reference. Okay, so asset, we talked a little bit about the liabilities. We calculate those by collecting all the data, running those through our systems to generate projections with our assumptions. Then we have to compare that to the asset values. And we talk about this each time that I'm here. The assets are the most difficult to predict, the most volatile part of our assumptions. It's relatively straightforward to predict mortality or other types of participant behaviors when you're looking at it over 200,000 participants because we all tend to behave in ways that are relatively easy to predict in a large group like that. But investment markets are not that way. What we do is we set a long-term return assumption that we do feel really good about over the long term. But you know, from your own personal investments, there's no way you can predict that that's going to be the case every single year. So we have a 6.75% assumption in terms of what we expect the long-term rate of return to be. And almost never is it exactly 6.75%. It's always a little higher, it's always a little bit lower. And in order to manage the volatility that creates for the funding purposes, we want the funding purposes, the funding rates to be something you can budget for, plan for, and not have too much volatility. We also don't want to get too far away from reality. We want it to be reflective of what's really going on in the markets. So we have what's called a smoothing method for the assets. We spread gains or losses that are above or below our 6.75% assumption. We spread those over 10 years. And that way, we can phase those into our funding contribution rates so that hopefully we can absorb any volatility without it causing too much havoc on the budget. So you'll hear me talk a little bit about actuarial value of assets, which is the smoothed value of assets. Then we'll talk about market value of assets, which is the full reflection of all gains and losses. This page is interesting. This represents the gains or losses above or below 6.75% returns in any given year over the past 10 years. You can see, maybe that print is big enough to see, the only year that we actually almost exactly hit 6.75% was 2023. We had a 6.7% return versus our 6.75% assumption, almost spot on. And if you look at the column down there on the chart, it's almost impossible to see because it's such a small number. But in any given year in the past, any amount of gains or losses that were above or below the expected return shows up on this chart. The blue section is the portion of the gain or loss that we've not yet reflected in the actuarial valuation because we're intentionally smoothing that. And the hope would be that they balance themselves out. And what's happening here is, in particular, if you look at 2021, there was a nearly 26% return on the year when, at that time, we were assuming 7.25%. So we had an 18% gain, which in the past, we had been able to have our charts go to 2 billion positive and 2 billion negative. So we had to expand the charts just to show 2021 on the page. And as luck would have it, you would hope that you could hang on to it. But in reality, the next year, there were some losses that helped balance those two out, but the losses were not as large as the gains the year before. So even though it was a 3.6% loss on the total return of the investments, since we were assuming 6.75, it was actually a 10% loss in our calculations. So anyway, those two are being recognized into the 10-year smoothing method. And in all total, there are still nearly 2.5 billion dollars of gains that are sitting out there unrecognized and for purposes of this actuarial valuation because we're still phasing those into the calculations. This is the comparison of the actuarial value, the smoothed value of assets, the blue, that's the gray line, compared to the market value. And you can see in 2021, the big year where there was a large return, the market value popped up, but the value that we were still using for purposes of all of our calculations stayed relatively flat. And then as the market value reverted a little bit, we got right back on track. So we are currently using a number that's 96% of the market value, so we're close. So we take the assets, put them together with the liabilities, come up with some funding recommendations. The only point I wanted to make on this slide is we try to make sure that the funding is solid in any given year and that it has three components. One is what we call normal cost. That's the amount of benefit being earned in any new year by all employees. So we want to make sure and fund that with their new year of service and compensation during that year. If there's any unfunded liabilities from the past, we amortize, we set those up on an amortization schedule to make sure we're paying for those over a reasonable period of time. And then any administrative fees that the plan supports, we try to cover those as well. So if all things are going according to plan, we eventually pay off any unfunded liabilities. And the only contribution that you really are required to make is the ongoing growth and benefits that's being earned in any given year. It's very common for pension plans to have unfunded liabilities. Almost no pension plan ever gets to full funding and stays there because as soon as you get there, there's some volatility in the investments. And so you're always chasing that a little bit. But the hope is, is that you get close to 100% funded and then you can stay there and monitor it as you go. This shows the total liabilities in both the state and the teacher groups. There's, if you theoretically had $33 billion of assets allocated just to the teacher group, you would have enough to be fully funded with no contributions. But these blocks represent the various pieces of the contributions I was just talking about. So you pay a slice of the blue bar each year to pay for the ongoing accrual of more service. You pay a slice of the, looking over at the state column, it's the only one that has an unfunded liability. You pay a slice of the dark blue column to pay off any unfunded amounts. And then we work those together to come up with a recommended rate of contribution. The thing that's important about this slide, though, is to realize that because the plans are so well-funded, the gray bars at the bottom that show the asset values. If there's any volatility in the assets, if the assets drop 10 or 20% in some years where there's some volatility, it has a huge impact on those other small bars because the liabilities don't change when the investments change. And if the assets drop, then those have to be recovered by way of additional contributions or you hang on and hope the assets recover. But that's, it's a significant material piece for a plan that is well-funded like the Legacy Plan. So just something to be aware of, that a fully funded plan is great and it's the goal, but it also comes with challenges. States that are not as well-funded may not have as much of a volatility when investment markets turn south because they weren't as well-funded to start with, so. Okay, in terms of looking at sort of the financial health of the plan, we talk about funded status. There's a lot of numbers on this page, but I'll just draw your eyes to a couple of important ones. If you look at the very bottom row, the 2023, in the middle, the 2023 funded ratio for all plans combined was 99%, so very, very close to 100%. And again, this was based on actuarial value. So this is the smoothed value of assets. That doesn't fully reflect all of the gains that we've had in the market. That funded ratio declined by a small amount in 2024, partly because, well, mainly because the assets did well, but it was a 10% return in 2024. So that's good. That exceeded our assumption. But we only used a tenth of that. We didn't reflect the full gain in 2024. And then there were some other losses in the plan that I'll show you later from a cost-of-living outcomes that were slightly more than we had been assuming, and then also salary assumption. The raises that were provided were a little bit more than what we had assumed. So those tended to balance out the investment gains that had occurred that we reflected. And so relatively flat on an actuarial basis. If you look at the market value basis, though, you can see an increase because we did get a gain, we did have a gain in the assets, and the market value page reflects 100% of that gain. So if you look at the bottom there, again, 100% as of 2023, up to 102.4% as of June 30, 2024 on a fully funded status. Now, each group has different histories. The state group has, if you look in the middle row across, 98% funded status. Teacher group has nearly 106%. There's some reasons in the past of different demographics, different behavior within the groups. The benefits are all the same. So it's not as though there's any advantage to one group or the other. But over the course of time, each plans have had their own experiences in terms of gains and losses. The investments are all managed the same, so the investment gains or losses are the same, but it's the other experience in the plan that we are constantly evaluating and chasing, so. This slide is a new slide that I've not shown you before. So the actuarial standards of practice that I'm required to uphold have some new requirements for governmental plans. And one of those is to show you a measure of risk associated with what if you invested your assets in a, some would call it a risk-free investment. I'm not sure there's such thing as total risk-free. So the name is a low default risk obligation. If you were to take all of the investments of TCRS and remove any risk from the situation, so you're investing in, the index that is generally accepted for this purpose is a 20-year high-grade government bond, where you would expect those to be paid with low default risk. The catch to that is, is if you take all of your investments, remove equities, remove other forms of risk, and you put it into those investments, you can't expect to return as much. So the current rate of return expected on this low default risk investment portfolio would be about 4.25%. So if we were to move all the investments into this low default risk investment and then set our assumptions to be 4.2, then you would need to come up with another $17 billion of funds somewhere over the course of future contributions. And that would significantly increase our recommended contribution rate. However, the history of the fund's performance shows that expecting to earn something over 4.25 is very realistic and has been achieved over the years. The 6.75% assumption that we make according to the investment mix is also very reasonable. And I think what this shows is, it shows the risk associated with having investments that are not risk-free, but it also shows the cost of having risk-free only investments. And so I think that's, the purpose of this is just to disclose that, make sure that we all understand that there is risk there, but we think it's a well-educated, calculated risk. And certainly, all governmental entities and private sector employers also agree there. Almost nobody is investing in only the risk-free rate, so there's that extra return there to be had, so. Okay, I'll pause for a second. Any questions? I'll move through the rest of this pretty quickly. So these are the amortization periods, the effective roll-up of, we have like 15 or 16. So these are the amortization periods, the effective roll-up of, we have like 15 or so different slices of gains or losses each year that we're amortizing into the funded rates. But these are the effective amortization periods that are relatively low in each group. You'll see some state governments who's, who's constantly re-amortizing their losses over 30-year periods, which are not as well received from a funding perspective. So this is a very meaningful way of doing this in a way that doesn't push it out into the future. It's a conservative approach to, to funding. So you're in, you're in good, you're in good standing there. These are the, all, all the different years. I won't, I won't make you go through each of these, but this again, just shows each year and how we're coming up with the effective amortization period. So then the net result, the recommended contribution rates for the 2024 valuation that will be effective July 1, 25, are on this page. A slight decline in the teacher rate. I've got a slide and a second that'll show why, but the other two groups are relatively I think you'll approve those at the end of the presentation unless there's any questions. These are the expected dollar amounts. We, you know, as the, as the legacy plan has an active population whose total payroll is expected to decline because you're not adding new employees, those percentages of payroll could potentially get a little off in terms of your dividing those dollar amortizations into a declining payroll. So we also like to look at the dollar expected requirements of each year. Those are also fairly flat for each group. You'll notice the state judges took a big decline. That is not any sort of volatility. There were some attorneys general that were included in that group that were technically more aligned in the state liabilities and benefits. And so we moved those into the state plan this year and so that the state judges group would be more refined to just the state judges that are represented there. So that's the difference in the contribution amounts. It does not represent any loss of funds or any meaningful volatility. So I'll just highlight a couple of these. This is how we got from last year's recommended rate to this year's recommended rate. If you look at the first row across the top, that's the asset experience. That is the 10% gain that the assets had last year, even though we only reflected 10% of that, the one-tenth of that in our smoothing method. So it puts some downward pressure on the contribution rate. I mentioned before that we were seeing salary increases that were slightly more than we had anticipated from our assumptions. So that's causing the contribution rates to go up a little bit as we adjust on the fly. So each year we look at the results and we make adjustments according to what we're seeing. The cost of living escalation pushed, put a little bit of upward pressure on the rates. Inflation has been running higher than the long-term averages. So the cost of living adjustments granted to plan participants were 3%. Our long-term assumption is a little over 2, 2 and 1/8. And so that caused the contribution rate to go up a little bit as we adjust for that experience. And then the only other ones that are material, the General Assembly and the governor approved a $300 million contribution to the state plan last fiscal year. So that lowered the state contribution rate by 1 and 1/2%, largely offsetting the salary and cost of living losses. So those were almost a wash, which is why we ended up in a fairly flat result from one year to the next. And I showed you those amortization layers that each group has. The teacher group has one from several years ago that was fully amortized. And now that that one layer is now gone, then that also lowered the rate for the teachers, which is the majority of the, the movement from the teacher rate from 2023 to 2024. This is, this is my favorite slide in terms of making sure that the results look reasonable because if we can explain every item that caused the contribution rate to change, then we feel pretty good that the data was correct and we, we've gotten everything in a way that we're comfortable with. If we end up with a situation where we can't explain some changes, then it makes you scratch your head a little bit and want to go back and, and look at things a little harder. So. So that's the summary from last year to this year. From a historical perspective, the, the state and teacher rates have had some differences, unique patterns. One important point to recognize is, and I was, I touched on this a little bit earlier, is the contribution rate really represents one point in time that we, we do our evaluation, we, we bring a recommendation to you. And if things change next year, it could be very different. And so you'll see back in the 90s, investments were doing incredibly well. And, and the entire decade of the 90s kept pushing the contribution rates down. I think there were even some benefit improvements enacted in those years and the investments were continuing to perform so well that it kept pushing the contribution rates down. That turned, at, at the turn of the century. And then the groups separated a little bit mainly because there were some assumption changes. There were some mortality assumptions that we had built in for teachers. We've always expected that teachers live a lot longer. We were already anticipating that. We started recognizing in the early 2000s that the state employees were also starting to live a lot longer as well. And so we made some assumption changes back then, which, which created a little bit of a gap in the two. And the state group actually has one of those amortization schedules that's soon to be paid off as well. So you'll start to see the state rate start to decline back toward the teacher rate as well. The other thing that makes these look a little bit unique is that the teacher group, this reflects only the employer portion of the contribution rate. The teachers are required to contribute 5% of their own money. So the total contribution rate that's really is a comparable between these two lines needs to raise the blue line up by 5% in order to get a more apples-to-apples comparison of the two. Just a couple of thoughts here, you know, and, and again, I've already really touched on this, is that the main points of future volatility will come from the investment returns. It's no fault upon your investment team. It's just the, it's the, the nature of the beast in terms of the volatility in the investment markets. We'll continue to monitor assumption changes, mortality, mortality experience, salary growth. We'll be looking at that with our experience study that's, that we're beginning to work on. So if we have any recommendations on that, we'll bring those to you next year as well. Okay, a couple of last slides and I'll be finished. These slides show, these slides are a little bit busy, but to, to point out what they are, we're, we're trying to show the, the future projections of the legacy plans since there are no new active employees entering those plans. And if you look at the, this is the teacher group that we're showing here, 110,000 participants that are currently in the teacher plan. This, this blue bar represents 2024, the first one on the left. It shows how many people are at each age group. So for example, if you take your eyes on the somewhere around 30 to 40 age group and you look straight up, you'll see that there's a little over 20,000 people at that age group in the teacher population. And then there's 20 or 25,000 people in the teacher population this year. That's about 70 or 80 as well. And as you expect those retirees to, to run through their lifetime and then also expect the active to retire, we take a snapshot 20 years later, 20 years after that, and then another 20 years. So we expect 80 years later, for the most part, for those participants to have aged out of the legacy plan. But that suggests that there's a long time, there's a long time horizon that we're going to need to continue to really closely monitor the legacy plan, even though the hybrid plan is only 10 years old. I think it only represents like 3% of the total liabilities. So we've still got a ways to go there. This is the same chart for the state plan. Again, you can see the 30,000 participants or so in the state group that are roughly 60 years old. And we look at those snapshots again, 20, 40, 60, 80 years later, and you can see the population declining. Interestingly enough, even though we froze, or we didn't freeze, we closed the, the legacy plans 10 years ago, the total benefit liabilities are still growing. There are still participants that are earning new years of service. They've not yet all retired. Those benefits are continuing to increase. And so we've still got a few years left, maybe another 10 years or so before those peak. And then we'll start to see those benefits declining over time. And you can see that, that's the orange line. The blue line represents the total participants that we're looking at on the previous chart. So those will also begin to decline. You know, I've made commitments to you in the past that 80 years from now, I'll come back and we'll prove whether or not this chart was accurate or not. Pretty good chance most of us won't be here then. There may be a few people behind me who could potentially be here in 80 years. But the next best thing I did is I looked back at these charts from five years ago. So we started putting these charts together five years ago and I was curious to see if we're, if we're on the same pattern that we thought we would be or if it's had any real volatility. And I was pleased to see that these charts have behaved almost exactly as we would have expected them to five years ago when we brought these to you at first. Like I said before, there's really no investment activity on this slide. And so the, the liability portions are much easier to predict. And so it won't exactly be 80 years from now, but it'll be pretty close. And so we'll keep monitoring that each year as we, as we come back and, and adjust if necessary. Here's the state group. It's already peaked mostly in terms of the liabilities, in terms of the age groups are different than the teachers. There's a few older, the, the demographics are a little bit older in the state group. And so those liabilities have already peaked, but again, are still very, very sizable and very meaningful with regard to the potential volatility and impact on state budgets. So. Okay, that's all I have. Appreciate your time and as always, I appreciate the opportunity to, to present these results to you. Are there any questions?
Questions of Mr. Thacker about the actual evaluation, presentation and report. Mr. Thacker, it's got to be an extremely satisfying thing to an actuary to find that your results are performing as per your charts, you know?
Very much. Those are the kind of things we get excited about.
Yes, well, it is the season of giving this season, so that's a gift to you, you know? So, all right, we recognize you for that great service. All right, any questions or comments or anything? All right, if not, the chair moves to approve the actual report presented by Mr. Thacker and adopt the actuarially determined contribution rates for the legacy teacher and legacy state and legacy judges' plans effective July 1, 2025 as recommended by the actuary based on the results of the June 30, 2024 valuation. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a second, all right. Commissioner Williams, seconds. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing now, since we're approving the actual report, I'll ask the secretary to call the role on the motion to adopt.
Mr. Archer.
There you go.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
Treasure Lillard.
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Stanfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Wormsley.
Yes.
And I vote as well, it's unanimous. All right, very good. The motion is adopted. Thank you very much, Mr. Thacker, for, and your firm, for your fine work. All right, item number seven is the next item, which is the investment report. We recognize Michael Reichbill, CFA, CAIA, our chief investment officer, along with his guests from Veris Consulting, whom he'll introduce.
Thank you, Treasure. I have Mark Brubaker with Veris Investment Consulting.
Thank you, Michael. And we'll get the presentation up here in a second. Well, if you have paper, you have paper copies in front of you, I can see that. So maybe, maybe I'll start while Daniel gets, gets it up and running. So on, on slide two of our deck, we have a economic, economic background that I wanted to cover before going into the performance of the fund itself. You can see the top of that, on the right-hand side, real GDP growth came in at the end of the quarter, a strong 2.7%, up from 2.7, I'm sorry, 2.4% the prior quarter. Inflation remains sticky. It's the core inflation, which excludes food and excludes energy, came in at 3.3% for the quarter, down from 3.7 and certainly down from its prior level. I think it peaked north of 8% several years ago. So inflation has been on a downward trend, but again, it remains sticky. We were talking about this in the investment committee meeting, but really it's, it's shelter that has been the stickiest part of inflation, both rents and housing prices. On a forward-looking basis, the market over the next five years is expecting inflation to come down slightly, but, but into the 2.3% range, not to the 2% Fed target range. As a result of the declining inflation, the Fed did cut rates, as you're well aware, in, in September, they had a 50-basis-point rate cut and then another 25-basis-point rate cut in November. And it's anticipated that there'll be another 25-basis-point rate cut in December, but there is some debate over that, given the strength of the economy. The, the jobs number just came in this morning, which was, was strong. It, it also demonstrated a strong real wage growth as well. So there, there might be some caution in December with, with the rate cut. Yields declined during, during the quarter. They started the quarter, the 10-year Treasury started at about 4.4%. It ended at 3.8%, which is a pretty dramatic decline in yields, which benefited fixed income securities. However, since that time, we've retraced our steps. If you look this morning, it was the 10-year Treasury is back up to about 4.2%. And then unemployment, it did tick up with this latest job report. It was 4.1% at the end of the quarter. It ticked up to about 4.2% this morning. And so, and then on the Veris report that you have in front of you, I'm, I'm gonna jump into slide four and taking a look at the capital market or the, the market backdrop. One thing, if you look at the U.S. equity returns, the S&amp;P 500 index was up 5.9% during the quarter. If you look out longer term at that index, you know, the, the one-year number, 36.4%. So we've had quite a run in the U.S. equity market. And up until this quarter, that run was driven primarily by large-cap tech, tech stocks. They've been, become known as the magnificent seven stocks. This quarter, however, things turned and it was, the, the markets were led by value names. They were led by smaller-cap stocks as well. And you could see that on the, on this table. The value index, the large, the Russell 1000 value index came at 9.4%, while the growth index was at 3.2%. And then the Russell 2000 index, which is a small-cap index, came in at 9.3%. So we, we saw a change in leadership in the market and in particular, interest-sensitive stocks, utilities, real estate stocks, financials outperformed the, the bulk of the market. But given that, given that strong relative return over the past, we, we, markets have gotten quite frothy, especially in the U.S. The forward-looking price-to-earnings multiple is about 21 and 1/2 times earnings. That's relative to the historical average, which is around 16. So, so we are, you know, do have some concerns about valuation levels in, in the U.S. equity markets. International stocks also did well during the quarter and actually performed better than, than large-cap U.S. stocks. The MSCI World XUSA Index was up 7.8%. A lot of that was driven by the, the weakening dollar and the strengthening of, of those non-U.S. currencies. And then finally, you can see fixed income returns were really strong during the quarter. Again, as, as yields decline, fixed income prices rise. And then, and then real estate was up about 16%. On slide five of, of your deck, I, we have the asset allocation, the breakout. And we ended the quarter, you can see in the blue bar, up 7, we had 73.2 billion in total assets. That was a high watermark, I think. And, and if you look at the allocation relative to target, all of the asset allocation is, is with, they're within tolerance bands around their, their target weights. We have a slight overweight to private equity due to, due to, you know, historical strong returns there and lack of liquidity there. And then we have an underweight to, to U.S. equity of about 1.7%. And then on slide six, just to look at the total fund results, and I'll go through this fairly quickly, but you can see for the quarter, up 4.7% at the total fund level. If you look out longer term, your one-year result plus 18.5%, three years, 5.1%, and five years was 8.9%. All of those returns rank well above median in your peer group and most of those are above your policy index as well. Really, this, driving the strong returns in recent time periods were, were your, were your U.S. equity and non-U.S. equity returns. However, longer term, it was private markets, private equity, private real estate and, and private credit that were the primary drivers of strong returns. And then the last thing I would cover is on slide 13. And here, we're taking a look at your, your returns on a risk-adjusted basis relative to your peer universe. So the peer universe that we're looking at here are public funds with assets greater than $5 billion in, in total. And there's about 45 of them on this page. And you can see the TCRS is that maroon box and they're plotting in the upper left-hand quadrant, which indicates that they have higher median, higher-than-medium returns and you have lower-than-medium risk over that five-year time period. and you have lower-than median risk over that five-year time period. So again, that's where, where we want to be. Probably won't be there every time period, but it's, it's, that's, that's our ultimate objective. Are there any questions for me before I turn it to Michael?
Thank you. Sorry, we didn't have your presentation loaded, so apologies. Great job of dancing there and not having your presentation up, so. Great to see you all again. Michael Brakebill, Chief Investment Officer. I was sketching some stuff down, thinking about this presentation just then. And one was what Justin Thacker, I thought, that, that new schedule he put together, I think is really informative. And it basically illustrates the, the cost of certainty and the trade-off of, of risk and certainty. I mean, we basically, the way the pension plan is structured, we have embedded risk and that decreases the cost overall. And I think that really was a, a great example of that. This past year, you know, there's this saying in investments that the market climbs a wall of worry. And, and it did climb a lot, and there are lots of worries. I was sitting here sketching things out, you know? Whether disinflation is going to continue, disinflation is the decline of inflation. Whether that's going to continue, valuations being high, global political uncertainties, you know, wars, you know, Ukraine, Palestine, Syria, you know, AI, what's happening with AI, crypto, cybersecurity. There's all these concerns out there and the market just, just kept going, didn't, didn't care. So it's pretty amazing. It was definitely the wall of worry. So we'll go through kind of some of our, the reports I like to share with you on a continuing basis, because it really highlights the period we've gone through, especially. And it may be we're getting near the end of some of these, which is our concern about this inflationary cycle. Because a lot of this stuff is, a lot of things we're walking through are normalizing. The first thing is housing here. The panel on the top is, is home, home prices. And the bottom is the year-to-year changes. And basically, when the red spike on the bottom chart took off, that was when interest rates were zero and housing prices hit the roof. And this was when obviously the Fed needed to act to, to tampen that down. They have, and you see the, the pretty stunning decline in the rates of inflation of housing. You know, it's bounced off the bottom recently, but it still looks, I think, fairly positive. The next chart is, is goods inflation. And this one is interesting, because these four charts show the flow of, of, you know, it's the inflation pipeline from, from, from rough materials to intermediate goods, finished goods into core piece, core CPI. And you can see through each one of these phases of production, on goods, inflation has really come down considerably. In fact, for goods right now, goods inflation is basically, we're, we're seeing goods start to fall in, in price right now. One of the drivers has been employment. And as Mark mentioned, the employment report came out today. Employment report, unemployment rose to 4.2%. The chart you see here is initial unemployment claims, which is a weekly indicator that we follow pretty closely to see a near-term change. It's been fairly flat. But slowly, over the past two years or so, really actually since March of '23, you know, we've seen unemployment rise from 3.4% to 4.2%. So the employment market is gradually slowing over time, which should take a lot of the pressure off of the inflation environment. And the next chart here from Ned Davis Research illustrates that in a different part, a different way. The top chart is non-farm payroll. The bottom chart is the change in non-farm payroll year-to-year and the changes in aggregate hours worked, so the total aggregate hours. And you can see that's moderated pretty much. So that means that the demand on the employment market has, has come down a fair amount. This next chart I just pulled out of this week's Federal Reserve issued their beige book report. This illustrates how the Federal Reserve system of banks, when they get all their data from each one of the, the 12 regions, you know, economic activity rose slightly. So that shows you that the Federal Reserve is seeing things. They're, they're not, it's not robust, it's slightly. This next chart, I think I've shared with you is the, we get this service from a, a group called Evercore, brokerage firm, and they have a, a weekly survey where they ping companies across the board and ask them the same set of questions and put together a survey. And it basically, it's like their outlook for the future. And their outlook for the future, you know, it needed to moderate. The peak you see to the right was when things were too hot and they needed to cool off. And as we've come down, that cooling has been underway. And so it shows you how company's outlook has kind of moderated over time. And, you know, it, it's now, you know, substantially below where it was pre-COVID, which is the gray column there. And so it shows you, you know, even, you know, on this other indicator, that economic growth has been slowing. The next chart is the leading economic indicator. And the, and the blue bars are recessions. And, and I've been pointing this out over time to say, hey, the, the LEI has never really dropped this far without a recession underway. We haven't seen that in any case. Economic growth has been good. Maybe one of the reasons is that instead of it, when we were at the peak earlier, it was a, it was too hot of a peak. So part of that decline may be just a, a, a give back from times that were too good. But it's something to keep an eye on. And similarly, moving on to valuations, this is probably as concerning as anything. Valuations of, of stocks are very high. This is the median valuation, medium S and P standard and poor stock price-to-earnings ratio. And the way they calculate that is they just take each one of the stocks, sort them in terms of their PEs, and the one in the middle, this is that one, that's the median. And, you know, it shows you that there's few times, the, the prior peak you see in, in 2020, that's when basically earnings fell apart. So there's two sides of the coin. There's prices going up and earnings going down or up. So prices can, our PEs can rise a lot if earnings go down, and that's what you saw there. But in the period we're in right now, earnings are good and PEs are, are strong. So valuations of stocks are extremely high. And, you know, it, it warrants caution, no doubt about it. On the fixed income market, and we've talked about this for some time, it's kind of the reverse image of it. It's not maybe glory days for fixed income, but if you kind of eyeball it where we are right now in that 5% range, that's basically where we were prior to the global financial crisis. So we're back to that plateau we were in between kind of 2002 to 2008. So, so we have normalized through this whole low interest rate period that we had for several years. So in, in a lot of respects, the fixed income marketplace looks fairly compelling right now. Monetary policy, this is what we've, I've shown you historically, the forecast for monetary policy. But this time, I'm showing you actually what has happened over a long period of time. And it really is, it's, I think it's, it's fascinating, because it shows you these ebbs and flows that we have all lived through over a long period of time. This starts at 1998. And each one of those peaks are when the Federal Reserve was trying to, to slow economic growth and kind of tap on the brakes. And so, you know, the one prior in 2000, that kind of precipitated the bust in 2000. And then we had our, things started, they had rates really low forever post-financial cry, or post-GFC, I mean, post-tech bubble, and had it for a long time. And slowly, we're trying to, to put on the brake into 2006. And then we had our financial crisis, and that really changed us for a long period of time, where interest rates were very low. Rates started to rise into the end of 2018, 19. And then right in front of the pandemic, we started, they started kind of seeing that they needed to raise, to, to raise liquidity, so they started cutting rates. So you can see where we are right now. We had the steepest rise in, in many, many years or maybe ever from an eighth of a percent to five and three-eighths of a percent, that's 5.375. That's the period we've gone through. This time last year, they, the Federal Reserve started indicating that the rate hike cycle was over. That's what precipitated all these wonderful gains we've had this past year. And in fact, as Mark mentioned, we see those two downticks in, in there. And the path of that blue line declining is what we all are debating and looking at right now and seeing how it impacts our investments. And final, on, on the portfolio itself, December the 4th, a couple of days ago at the close, $73.7 billion, up $3.35 billion fiscal year-to-date. So it's a really good number, and that includes us paying net benefits out. So we actually created more value than that. This number is about $500 million higher than you see in the performance report. It's done a little better in the subsequent quarter of that. So fiscal year-to-date return is about 5.9%. And as, as I mentioned, the investment committee, it's absolutely shocking. We're up 27.9 or virtually $28 billion since the low in the pandemic. So a huge, huge, huge return. We're fairly neutral overall. Returns for stocks have been so good, we keep kind of peeling off a little stock and buying a little fixed income. And every time you do that, you feel like it hurts, because the stocks keep going up on you. And, and you, but we keep maintaining that discipline to, we never know when things are going to turn. And in fact, earlier this year, it felt like that turn was already happening. And, and, but it has kept going on with that. So really happy with the way the fund has been performing. And, you know, coming into the year end, we'll have to see what 2025 brings for us. So that's where we are with the portfolio. Love to hear any questions anybody has, and, and thank you very much.
Any questions of Mr. Brakebill here about his report, the discussion with Veris? All right. Thank you very much, Michael and team, for your comments here today. All right, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is item eight, which is opportunity for public comment. We received no requests for public comments, so there are none. And we'll let the record reflect that there are none. And the next item is item number nine, which is other business, any other business to come before the Board of Trustees today? All right, seeing none. The next item is adjournment, item 10. The chair would move that we adjourn, and I want to say so in saying that. Thank you very much for your service this year to the TCRS and the state of Tennessee, and wish everyone a happy holiday. Is there a second for the motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wormsley, seconds. It's non-debatable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the matter's adjourned. Thank you.